Good evening and welcome to the October 27th, 2025 City Council Special Meeting. I am Mayor Ross and tonight's meeting is brought to you live using video conferencing technology provided by Zoom. And tonight's recording will be posted on the city's YouTube channel. City Clerk Dean, will you please call the role?
Councilmember Benson. Councilmember Watten.
Here.
Councilmember Holloway.
Yeah.
Councilmember Washington.
Here.
Councilmember Cotton.
Here.
Councilmember Christianson. Councilmember Johnson.
Oh, here.
Mayor Ross.
I am here. At this point, I'm not sure about Councilmember Benson. Do you want to excuse him for this portion of the meeting?
So moved.
So moved.
Moved by Councilperson Johnson. Second by Councilperson Christianson. Any discussion? Hearing none. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, nay? It is unanimous and we are excusing Councilmember Benson. Tonight, we have our first item of business is to approve the agenda, which is the State Auditor's Office Exit Conference. Is there a motion to approve?
So moved.
Second.
Moved by Councilwoman Washington, second by Councilperson Johnson. Is there any discussion? Seeing none. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, nay? And the motion passes and the agenda is approved. So tonight's item, special business, is State Auditor's Office Exit Conference for Fiscal Years 2022 and 2023 in Compliance with COVID Funds Program. And Finance Director Dubouté will be introducing this item.
All right. Thank you, Mayor. Good evening to all of you council members. First, I'd like to take a moment to thank the State Auditor's Office for their presence tonight. Certainly looking forward to the conclusions for Fiscal Year 22 and 23. I know it's been a lot of intense work from both our staff and the SAO to kind of reach this stage. And it's been relatively an abnormal year for everyone because not only were we trying to do just one year, it's been two years that we're trying to cover. So in my mind, this is five audits that we're covering in one exit, one exit conference. But what I will say is it does feel really, really good to reach this stage. We've been working to catch up, so we thank you for your time and attendance to that. Thankfully as well, I'm very thankful for our guiding light, Jen Hughes too, for all her hard work on this, as well as staff, for their efforts in helping us to catch up on these audits. And so with that said, I'd like to turn it over to Jen for some additional comments.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. My name's Jen Hughes, Deputy Finance Director. I'm going to be echoing a lot of what Drew shared, so on behalf of the City of Snoqualmie, I'd like to welcome our guests from the Washington State Auditor's Office. And I would like to express my appreciation for the audit team, for their professionalism, thoroughness, the collaborative approach throughout this engagement. We recognize and value the time, care, and expertise that you dedicated to reviewing our financial practices and the compliance. Your diligence and expertise helps to ensure that our financial stewardship remains strong. The results of the audit reflect the hard work and dedication of our entire organization, and we are truly proud of the progress that we're making together. This exit conference gives us the opportunity not only to hear the final outcomes, but to celebrate the continued strengthening of our internal controls, our compliance efforts, and our commitment to transparency and accountability. The successes in these areas demonstrate the care with which we manage public resources and the high standards we hold ourselves accountable to on behalf of our community. We value the excellent working relationship that we have with the State Auditor's Office, and we look forward to building on this momentum as we begin the audit process for 2024. Thank you again for your efforts and for joining us this evening, Council. With that, I'm going to turn it over to the audit team for them to begin their presentation.
All right. Thank you. So good evening, everybody. So yes, we're here to share the results of the city's most recent accountability, financial, and attestation engagements. My name is Haji Adams. I'm the Audit Manager. I'm with June Lee, who was the supervisor on the audit, and then also Zach Shelton, who was the Audit Lead for the audit. We've also provided you all with a packet of information that includes the exit conference document for today, and then also the draft audit reports that will be issued as well. So I just wanted to start by saying that one of the most important things about audits is their role in increasing trust in your city. So an audit lets you, staff and others such as the public, know if errors, operations are working properly, or if there's any improvements that can be made in the areas that we review and examine as well. And then also having that third-party independent audit is important. It increases the public's trust that the information presented by the city can be relied upon. It also gives you all assurance as well that the information presented in the financial statements can be relied upon. And then also that the city is compliant with state laws, rules, regulations, your own policies and procedures as well, and safeguarding of public resources. And then the results are made available online and then published as well on our website. So with that, I'll hand it over to Zach and he'll go over the results of your audit.
Perfect. Thanks, Haji. Can everyone hear me okay? I just want to make sure.
Yes, we can.
Great. Awesome. All righty. So I'm going to go through the audit report here. And so the packet is several pages. We highlighted some key things that I'll go through with you. And so I'll mention some page numbers, but if you can follow along, I'll try to mention the report as we go through. So the first report I'll be doing, going through, will be the Accountability Audit Report. So it's technically the fourth page you have. It says Accountability Audit Report for City of Snoqualmie. And so this was for the period of January 1, 2022 through December 31, 2023, so two years. So if you look down, a couple pages down, onto page four of that accountability report, that's where we're talking about the results in brief. So I'll give everyone a second to get there. It says audit results, results in brief. It's page four of the Accountability Report, where it says the page number at the bottom. So for results in brief, specifically for the Accountability Audit, our audit showed that in those selected areas, city operations complied in all material respects with applicable state laws, regulations, and its own policies, and also provided adequate controls over the safeguarding of public resources. And so the object of an accountability audit was to ascertain whether the city complied in respects to its own policies and procedures. And so we do a risk-based approach when we select audit areas for review. So farther down on that same page, we have the areas that we included in our audit. And so we examined these following areas, and I'll talk about a few of them today. But if anyone has any questions about them, feel free to let me know. So the first is accounts payable, and there's really three different areas here. So we have travel expenditures, credit cards, and also health reimbursement arrangement disbursements. So for travel expenditures and credit cards, what we did is we looked at a list of all the expenditures that the city had for the two years, and we selected multiple transactions for each to review to make sure that, one, they were approved correctly, and also that the documentation was retained and kept as required. So then for health reimbursement arrangement dispersments, or HRA dispersments, we also selected from random employees, and we looked at the amounts they requested for reimbursement, and we traced those amounts to their bank accounts or to checks to their address to make sure that the dispersments that they requested went to them specifically. Then we also looked at the software conversion for the general ledger and accounts receivable. So back in 2022, the city had a software conversion. And so our goal for that was to gain an understanding of what the city did to make sure that the data that was at the end of the old software and the data that was at the beginning of the new software was the same. So we tested for that using spreadsheets and internal documents from the city. And then there are a few other there as well with compliance with state grants, accounts receivable with utility billing, payroll with gross wages, open public meetings with compliance with minutes, meetings, and executive session requirements, and then also financial condition for viewing for indications of financial distress. So are there any questions over the Accountability Audit Report or any of the areas reviewed? No?
Questions?
All right. Is there a question? No. Okay. All righty. Now we will be moving on to the Financial Statement Audit. And so if you go to the next report, it says Financial Statements Audit Report. So City of Snoqualmie. So this period is going to be the same period of the accountability. So that's January 1, 2022 through December 31, 2023. Should be about the 11th page. There's not specifically page numbers, but around the 11th page, it says Financial Statements Audit Report. And then you're going to scroll all the way down to where it says Independent Auditor's Report for City of Snoqualmie. And we have a few things highlighted that we wanted to go over today. So I'll give everyone just a second. All right. So this says the report on internal controls over financial reporting and on compliance and other matters based on an audit of the financial statements. So we have audited in accordance with auditing standards, the government auditing standards, the financial statements of the City of Snoqualmie. And so like I said, those were the years of ending in December 31, 2023 and 2022. And so we issued a unmodified opinion on the fair presentation of the city's financial statements that's in accordance with the regulatory basis of accounting. We also wanted to note that we issue an adverse opinion on the fair presentation with regard to accounting principles generally accepted in the United States of America, so GAAP, because the financial statements are prepared by the city using accounting practices that are prescribed by state law and the state auditor's budgeting, accounting, and reporting system. So that's bars. So that's mentioned and described in Note 1. And then moving down on reporting of internal controls over financial reporting, down in the next page there, we consider internal controls, and then a deficiency in control exists when the operation doesn't allow for management or employees in the normal course of performing their actions to prevent or detect misstatements on a timely basis. But our audit did not identify any deficiencies in internal controls that we consider to be a material weakness. And then also on reporting for compliance and other matters, as part of obtaining reasonable assurance about whether the city's financial statements are free from material error or misstatements, we perform tests on its compliance with certain provisions of laws. And then the results of our test disclosed no instances of noncompliance or other matters that are required to be reported. And then moving down a few more pages, it's another Independent Auditor's Report, still over the financial statements. It's about 17 pages in. That's the report on the audit of the financial statements. So that's this Independent Auditor's Report, the same period. But we wanted to let you know that we issued an unmodified opinion on the regulatory basis of accounting, so the bars manual. So in our opinion, the accompanying financial statements referred to above present fairly in all materially respects. So I wanted to go through that as well. We are also required to inform you if there are any uncorrected misstatements. And so uncorrected misstatements in the audited financial statements are summarized on that first page that you got with your exit conference agenda. We agree with management's representation that this misstatement is immaterial to the fair presentation of the financial statements. And then lastly, and we address certain risks that we are required to address for audit standards. And the risk that we address is the possibility that management may be able to circumvent certain controls or standards that require that risk. But we're pleased to announce that we noted no instances or cases where management was able or had the potential to override certain controls. All right. And so we've gone through the accountability and then the financial. I wanted to see, are there any questions with the financial audit? Or any of the reports?
Yeah. Councilor Cotton?
Yes, I did have a question because I noticed it, as you've already mentioned stated several times in reading through the reports. Since Washington requires the bars method for reporting and you're a Washington State Auditor's Office, we do get an adverse opinion because of the GAAP procedure. Is Washington going to be required to change over to GAAP? And in other words, is our city going to be required to change accounting practices going forward or in the future?
Yeah, that's a great question. I think, Haji, did you want to go ahead and answer that?
So you would not be required to change to GAAP accounting? So a lot of entities in Washington State actually do follow the regulatory basis of accounting, or also known as the cash basis of accounting. It's just required language that we're required to have in the report due to the city being on cash basis. But many, many cities are on the cash basis, or use the cash-based methodology. Yeah. So no requirement to change to GAAP at all?
And is one better than the other? Director Bouté?
I would suggest that maybe GAAP is a higher standard. Part of the challenge with smaller governments across the state of Washington is you would then have to really invest in your finance department in order to accomplish those practices and principles that are laid out in GAAP. And so as a consequence of that, the majority of governments in the state operate on the cash basis or utilize the bars manual as required by state law overall. But, you know, as mentioned, the State Auditor's Office does have a responsibility to issue the adverse opinion overall, and it's a common opinion that we receive every year, basically, to this point. If we were to move to a GAAP basis, there'd be a lot of transition, I think, overall in the finance department in order to accomplish that, and that would require additional resources in order to kind of meet those standards. And yeah.
We'll wait till another time.
Thank you.
That's Washington.
So just to follow up, Director, is there a certain population limit that requires that you start using your accrual method?
I don't think that there is a standard population limit anymore. I think there used to be one potentially, but, you know, let's say some cities have actually been moving back from the GAAP basis to the cash basis, I think, overall, just because it's a less strenuous standard to kind of meet. You know, in terms of population, I think I'd have to probably rely upon the State Auditor's Office, but I think somewhere probably around 25,000 to 30,000 is probably kind of the normal kind of population standard overall, although don't quote me on that necessarily. And I think in this state, you're going to find about 50-plus cities out of the 250 in the state that are operating on the GAAP basis. So, yeah. Don't quote me if I'm wrong. Yeah.
So there's no set standard for population size? Yeah.
Councilor Benson?
Are there advantages to, that the city would receive if we were operating in compliance with GAAP? Or is it?
I mean, it's hard to tell because I've never worked at a larger city necessarily. You know, it's, as a part of these reports, if we were to ever issue a new revenue bond, for example, these reports would be submitted on behalf of that revenue bond. Overall, investors would want to take a look at this. It provides potential investors with a higher assurance, I guess I would say, of the overall kind of quality of the work of the finance department, making sure that those internal controls are in place. But what I will say to you is really the bars manual is a very, very adequate, right? Replacement for GAAP. Cities are not able necessarily to achieve that with the financials and the resources they have. So what I think is in the bars manual, and that's why we've got the State Auditor's Office, is that is a very comprehensive guide for us and reporting standard for us to meet overall. And it's generally been well-received, I think, by the public or investors or other sort of people that are interested in what we're producing here. And as a result of that, it still maintains its full effect in our state law. So if there are any issues with it, then yeah, the state may want to make a change, but they haven't, which means I think things are working pretty well.
Yes, and I will say, oh, sorry, go ahead.
Go ahead.
I was just going to say, too, yes, like Drew said, there are many cities around the state. There are also counties as well, so Pacific County and Grace Harbor County that are more south. They also report on a cash basis. And so special purpose districts, things like that, report that way as well. Any other questions?
Nope, I don't believe so.
Great. Thanks so much for the questions. All right. So we have one more report that we're going to go over. And so this is about 23 pages down. So it's the next report. It says, Report on Compliance with Coronavirus State and Local Fiscal Recovery Fund Program Requirements. That's a mouthful, but that one is the last. It's got the same header as the other two reports. That's on page 23. And we're going to go down about two pages to the Independent Accountants Report. All right. So as soon as you get there, we'll talk a little bit about it. So this one is only for the period of January 1, 2023 through December 31, 2023. So this is just one year. So we examine the City of Snoqualmie's compliance with the requirements of activities allowed or unallowed, and also allowable costs and cost principles, which are specified requirements. And they're described in Part 4 of the Coronavirus State and Local Fiscal Recovery Fund section of the Compliance Supplement. And so management of the city is responsible for the compliance with specific requirements for the funding. So our responsibility is to express an opinion on the city's compliance with the specified requirements based on our examination. And so as you'll see, the second highlight, our examination was conducted in accordance with attestation standards that were established by the American Institute of Certified Public Accountants. And so the standard applicable to attestation engagements contained in government auditing standards. And then, as you'll see, all the way down, we're required to be independent of the city and to meet our other ethical responsibilities in accordance with the engagement. And then our opinion, the City of Snoqualmie complied in all material respects with the aforementioned requirements during the period, January 1, 2023 to December 31, 2023. So that one was pretty quick, but were there any questions over the attestation report at all?
Any questions?
All right. And then before I turn it over to June really quickly, I also wanted to say thank you to city staff for their consistent communication and timeliness of audit requests, which resulted in an efficient audit, specifically to Jen and Kyla and Ann and also Drew for their hard work in helping make sure that the audit went smoothly. They were working very diligently to get us all the requests we needed. And so now I'm going to turn it back over to June really quickly for some closing remarks.
All right. Thanks, Zach, for the very detailed coverage of the report. So before finalizing this report, this audit, there are a few closing remarks to share with you. The Accountability Financial Attestation Reports will be issued in about a week. You'll get an email notification when they're posted on our website. Around the same time, we'll email Jen a reminder with the link on how to file the attestation compliance report directly with the U.S. Treasury. You'll receive a survey when your reports are released. Please tell us how we did and any suggestions for improvement for next time. We don't know what we don't know, so any feedback is much appreciated. And then the actual audit cost aligned with our original estimate, which will be about 69,200. And then the next audit is starting immediately about now to cover all three parts, including both the Accountability and Financial Statement Audits, plus the attestation examination on the SLIF grant again for fiscal year 2024. An estimated cost is about 42,300. And then, so last but not least, we would like to take this opportunity to mention a couple of our teams that provide complimentary support services to local and state governments. The local government support team, also known as LGS, is available to provide one-on-one technical assistance on financial reporting and accounting questions. This team also offers trainings on the latest accounting and financial reporting topics. And then the Center for Government Innovation is another team that offers great resources to help local governments find ways to become more efficient and transparent. Some of those services offered include cyber checkups, lean process improvements, best practices, and then team building workshops. So help is available if you need it. Just give them a call. And we have now concluded our exit presentation for both fiscal years 22 and 23. Are there any questions? We can answer at this time.
Councilor Johnson?
So on page looks like this. This is the exit conference. And then there's the little description of one item. I just wanted to understand like how the process works for deciding if something is material or not. So like in this case, for the charges for goods and services, it's just like, you know, someone sent an email and had a typo. Oh, sorry. And then, yeah, that's fine. Was it that, let's see, let me see how this is said here. Agree with the manager, this misstatement is immaterial. Right. That was the word. Immaterial. Is that based on like the number? Like if this had been 210,000 or $2 million, then it would have been a misstatement. I'm just wondering what the process is for deciding that something is immaterial or material?
Yes, so we do have a materiality threshold when we conduct the audit. So this is considered immaterial. So it's under the threshold that we have.
Okay, so the amount?
Yep. So we consider this to be insignificant to the financial statements as a whole.
It's about 10%, I believe, to that position.
Yes, typically it's 10%. This is the threshold.
I'd assume that we couldn't just like hit that for a bunch of things. If there was like a certain number of times that we keep being 10%, that would also trigger a concern.
Yes. So when we take a look at errors in the financial statements, we also look at all the errors as a whole, right? So you could have a lot of immaterial errors that might show that internal controls aren't working as well, right? So we do have a materiality threshold separately, and then we also have to look at it in aggregate as well once the audit's completed to see what all the errors look like. You might have errors in certain areas of the financial statements. So we take a look at that in conjunction with your internal control processes as well.
Thank you.
Any other questions?
So, well, I think potentially, Jen, if you want to speak to this item just a little bit, but what I'll say is the charges for goods and services, that's a revenue. So in essence, the city underreported a revenue amount by 21,141 dollars. And Jen can get into that a little bit to provide more clarity.
Absolutely. So as reassurance, the financial statements are correct. This was considered an off-the-book entry, which essentially, it was recognized that an entry was not entered into our accounting system, but it was after a certain time period where we could not go back into our system and enter it. But the financial statements reflect the correct amount.
Thank you.
And then Jen also has some final comments if we're good with questions, but happy to take more questions.
Councilor Johnson?
I guess just one last comment on the idea of GAAP is that if there were findings and if we were having some significant problems, then perhaps that would be a point where we could start saying, hey, maybe the system we're using isn't working. But given that's not the case, it'd be sort of trying to fix something that isn't broken.
So I'll just say that the cash basis is basically an easier method to implement overall as opposed to the accrual basis. So one of the things that we're, for example, not doing as a cash basis government is recording at historical cost our fixed assets. Now, I'm sure from the work that Haji and June have done over time, they're probably having to spend a lot of time focused on fixed assets for other kind of cities and agencies, I think, overall. The time and effort required that goes into tracking those fixed assets at cost appropriately, you have to measure everything that you've got at this city. I mean, think overall, transportation networks, utilities, for example, to where it would take probably a good additional person or two to be able to do that on a full-time basis. And so when we talk about the cash basis, it is a resource issue, I think, overall. If you want to move to a GAAP basis eventually, you're going to have to staff appropriately in the finance department in order to accomplish that. And that's just one example. We get to the ACFA, right? For the most part, the financial statements that we're producing are not to the same degree of complexity as the ACFA is necessarily overall. And so that requires additional resources in the finance department. So I think what we're on, the cash basis, is appropriate for the size of the government that we are. And that's not to say that we don't operate on the accrual basis. We do have a modified accrual approach where we do have accounts receivable and accounts payable and things like that. And all that's converted to cash at the end of the year, and then we reestablish that at the beginning of the year. So we do have some of those elements in place overall. But I see dollar signs when we start talking about GAAP and what it is actually required to get us there. The fact that we're moving to a new ERP system, which is similar to what a lot of the kind of larger cities do in our area, is actually potentially could help us to get there if we want to move in that direction. But I don't see anything immediately for us to be able to accomplish, given the budget that we've got right now, overall, things like that. So that's just my perspective. If we do want to go there, then we'll have to have a conversation about what does the finance department need to look like in order to achieve those sorts of standards that come through that standard of reporting.
Yeah. I just wanted to add that Drew is absolutely right. So cash basis is less complex than the GAAP. And so in a nutshell, the difference between a GAAP and the cash basis is that, like you said, fixed assets, or we call it the capital assets. So in cash basis reporting, you don't capitalize any assets even above that threshold. So you expense it instead. And then also you do not report long-term liabilities on your financial statement. So. So cash in and out.
Yeah, we're getting into depreciation and having to track depreciation accurately.
Right, but you do report your liabilities on the schedule of liabilities, which is Schedule nine. So.
So so the detail and expense that we would have to go through in order to go to GAAP is way more than the benefit that we would get from all of that.
In my professional opinion, I would say yes.
You may need additional staffing and time and effort.
Right.
Any other comments or questions? So it's been very helpful. Thank you, thank you for your time and attention.
And Jen, I'd love to have her kind of, if there's no more questions, I keep on doing this.
Well, and thank you, June, Haji, and Zach for this incredible presentation. But before we close the meeting, I also wanted to recognize Kyla Henderson, who is here. She's our senior accountant. And then we have Ann Bacher, she was not able to be here, but she is one of our most recent hires, and she's the city's accountant and really has stepped it up and was a tremendous help to getting this over the finish line as well. Their dedication and countless hours of work ensured that the city was able to complete multiple years of audit catch-up within a single twelve-month period. It's an outstanding accomplishment that deserves far more praise than my words could ever offer. So I thank them tremendously. And then Mayor, Council, and city staff and the partners at the State Auditor's Office, just thank you again for your time, your collaboration, and then the continued support for our strong financial stewardship.
Thank you. So I'd also like to thank the State Auditors for coming in and doing two years of financial statements. Really appreciate it for your work with our team. And again, thank you to our team, including Deputy Finance Director Jen Hughes, Finance Director Drew Bute, Kyla Henderson, and Ann Bacher. So this is pretty awesome, we're finishing about five different audits, your clean audits, no findings, and no management letters. So congratulations. And maybe you can enlighten me on how many years it's been that we haven't had. We've always had clean audits, no findings. How many years in a row do you remember?
Well, for the financial statement, I do not know. So the financial statement and accountability audit, I haven't seen any findings since I've been here. That's been about a decade at this point.
So congratulations, a nice job. Thank you, thank you.
Thanks, team.
Nothing like a goalie with a clean sheet.
And so taking on the task of one more year, so that'd be three years of financial audits this year. So it's pretty awesome, thank you.
Thank you.
Guys can say, I'll be back and.
Thank you.
Anything else? Okay, being known for the business, I'll take a motion to adjourn.
So moved?
So moved.
Been moved by Councilor Johnson, second by Councilor Washington, to adjourn. All of those in favor, say aye?
Aye.
And oppose nay? And we are adjourned for a special meeting at six thirty-four. So this brings us to our regular meeting of the City Council. The time is seven PM, and we just completed our special meeting, which is the State Auditor Exit Conference. Let the record show that all council are present. Council, please stand and join us in the Pledge of Allegiance. Councilor Walton, would you please lead the pledge?
I collect my allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic from which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. The first item is, regular business is to approve the agenda. Council may have a motion to approve the agenda.
So moved?
Second.
Been moved by Councilor Washington, second by Councilor Christensen. Is there any discussion? Seeing none? All in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Aye.
And oppose nay? And the motion passes and the agenda is approved. So the first item is, I have a proclamation, and this is Kindness Month. So whereas the City of Snoqualmie honors those, no matter how young or old, that make a positive difference in our community and our world, and whereas Empower Youth Network's Youth Suicide Prevention Program, which includes the Be Kind SV, or Snoqualmie Valley Campaign, makes our schools, communities, and states stronger by facilitating meaningful change through simple acts of kindness. And whereas by knowing, understanding, using our power of kindness, we have the ability to send out a positive ripple that may travel throughout the Snoqualmie Valley and beyond. And whereas through simple acts of kindness, we can promote healthy behaviors and positive dynamics within our community. Therefore, I, Catherine Ross, Mayor of the City of Snoqualmie, do hereby proclaim November twenty twenty-five as Kindness Month. And we have tonight with us, Helene Witnick, who is the Director of Empower Youth, or interim executive director. She's going to say a couple of words.
Thank you, Mayor Ross, and thank you, Snoqualmie City Council members. Thank you for your leadership and for joining in kindness proclaiming November as Kindness Month in the Snoqualmie Valley. As you heard, this is one of our campaigns that brings to light the idea that even in the simplest ways, we can prevent suicide for our youth and other harmful behaviors. Our campaign is also in the schools as well. And tonight, you're joining the other cities of Duval, North Bend, Carnation, as well as the Riverview and the Snoqualmie Valley School Districts. So you're not alone with this work of declaring November as Kindness Month. We also want to thank the City of Snoqualmie for your ongoing support and funding of our work. I also want to make sure that you're invited to our free special showing of Paddington. Each year, we just do a free movie for the community. That'll be coming up on Sunday, November ninth, at the North Bend Theater, one of our amazing business partners. Doors open at eleven-thirty with free popcorn and soda for all of you. We look forward to celebrating kindness in our community with you. For more ways to support our work, including volunteering for our mentoring or weekend Power Pack program, please visit us at empoweryouthnetwork.org or follow us on Facebook or Instagram. Thank you very much.
We're getting a picture.
Seen Paddington?
And we have Drew Bute.
Have you seen Paddington?
Multiple hats tonight.
Oh, no, you haven't seen Paddington. If you had seen Paddington, you would remember it. It's a very good movie. Paddington Two's incredible too. Paddington Three was very good too. All the Paddington movies are wonderful.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Got me back on Marmalade.
Right, and so there's the full proclamation you could find actually in the council packet online. Now we're moving on to public comment. In the public comment portion of the agenda, this time we'll ask residents to comment on items not on the agenda, and no online public comments will be accepted during the meeting. Written comments are encouraged and may be submitted in person by mail or email to cityclerk@snowqualmiewat.gov. So is there anyone within the city hall that'd like to do public comment? Councilor? Cotton, you want to do public comment?
I would like to make some public comment, yes.
Okay, and so you know the ground rules? So I'll ask you to go over there and make public comment and state your name and city. Thank you. We have three minutes.
Catherine Cotton, City of Snoqualmie. I am here to offer a public apology. I wrote a public letter that was published on Living Snoqualmie over the weekend with the intent of trying to bring council, administration, city staff, and everybody back onto a more positive note. There's been some divisiveness amongst us, and there was never any intent on my part to cause any feelings, hurt feelings, or anything at all. This was not the intent of what I was trying to do. So for that, if anyone took offense, I offer my sincerest apology for that. So I hope that that is satisfactory, so that we can all continue to work together. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Any other public comment? Seeing none, our public comment is now closed. Now we move on to consent agenda. Consent agenda contains approval of the city council meeting minutes dated October thirteenth, twenty twenty-five, approved the claims report dated October twenty-seventh, twenty twenty-five, AB twenty-five dash zero nine one, traffic and criminal software agreement, AB twenty-five dash zero nine zero, server upgrades, AB twenty-five dash zero nine three, resolution adopting Snoqualmie Valley's school district capital facilities plan from twenty twenty-five to twenty thirty, and AB twenty-five dash zero nine seven, storage upgrade. Is there a motion to approve the consent agenda?
So moved?
Second.
Been moved by Councilor Walton, second by Mayor Protem Holloway. Is there any public comment? Seeing none in the city hall chambers? Any discussion? Seeing none, all those approved, say aye?
Aye.
Aye.
And oppose nay? And the consent agenda is approved. Next item is the ordinance of AB twenty-five dash zero seven four, compost use and procurement ordinance. This is the second reading of ordinance thirteen oh seven. Councilor Benson, would you please read the introduction and motion?
This agenda bill seeks city council adoption of the proposed ordinances, Exhibit A, adopting compost use and procurement policies. Move to approve ordinance thirteen oh seven, amending the Snoqualmie Municipal Code Title Eight related to compost procurement.
Second.
Been moved by Councilor Benson, and who's the second, Councilor Washington? Okay, is there a big comment, but no one is located in the city hall for public comment? So is there any discussion? Would you have project engineer Patrick Frye available for questions online? Any questions, Councilor Benson?
The gist of it is that we need to use more compost. We're already using a lot of compost. The Parks and Public Work Staff already composts trees that it takes out or that are blown down and uses that in projects. If you went to the Green Snoqualmie event, you saw that we planted in a place that was lousy with compost, lots and lots of compost being used. The budgetary implications are that when we do projects that require soil to be used by contractors, they'll have to source locally sourced compost. And it should not be a problem for any of the projects that we're going to encounter at all. So. Basically, it's an ordinance to do the things we're doing.
Any other comments? Right, seeing none, all in favor, say aye?
Aye.
And oppose nay? And the AB twenty-five dash zero seven four compost use and procurement ordinance is passed. The next item, AB twenty-five dash zero nine five, ordinance amending the minimum licensing threshold for out-of-city businesses in SMC five dot zero four dot zero one five B. This is the first reading of ordinance thirteen oh eight. Mayor Protem Holloway, would you please read the introduction?
This ordinance seeks to amend SMC five dot zero four dot zero one five B as required by RCW thirty-five dot nine zero dot zero eight zero, by increasing the minimum licensing threshold for out-of-city businesses from two thousand dollars to four thousand dollars, under which an out-of-city would not have to pay a business license fee and establish an increase in the threshold every four years based on the change in the June-to-June Consumer Price Index during that period. And I want to make a motion, but I'm not going to.
Pardon me?
I want to make a motion, but I'm not going to.
All right, so is there any discussion? Would you have Finance Director Drew Bute, who is available to answer any questions?
So I'm happy to discuss this. Thank you for the reading from the Mayor Protem. So the purpose of really of doing this is to match the model business license ordinance that is approved by and associated with Washington City's Committee. The purpose of this model ordinance basically is to ensure, the state wants to ensure that there's uniformity across the different cities in terms of what's required as a business license overall. You can imagine if you have, you know, two hundred and fifty-plus cities across the state, each with different business licenses, that's not going to make this state business-friendly itself. And so as a consequence of that, the state approved RCW or has in state law, RCW thirty-five dot ninety dot zero eight zero, which requires cities that impose a general business license to develop and adopt a uniform business licensing ordinance that would be consistent across all cities with the help of the AWC. As a part of that law, the RCW requires that the model ordinance adopted by those cities contain a minimum licensing threshold under which a business would not have to pay a business licensing fee. And in twenty eighteen, that model ordinance established a two thousand dollar minimum licensing threshold overall. So across all the cities in the state, you've got a two thousand dollar minimum licensing threshold basically for out-of-city businesses. And that's a mandatory requirement of state law. Back in twenty twenty-four, the general business community requested a review of that model ordinance, given the dramatic increase in online sales and deliveries. So basically complaints from the business community about kind of that requirement overall. So as a result, the AWC convened a working committee to review the proper minimum licensing threshold for out-of-city businesses. What came out of that was an increase in the minimum licensing threshold for out-of-city businesses from two thousand to four thousand dollars, which means basically they would have to generate. If they generate anything less than four thousand dollars in the community in terms of, say, gross income, you know, it would not have to be required of them to pay to the city. Now, cities can still require a business license, and the people, businesses that operate in the city could still register, but they don't have to pay a fee necessary for that. As a result, so all cities across the state that have business licensing, and that's pretty much everyone, will have to adopt this model ordinance. We can't necessarily get away from this or escape it necessarily. The Department of Revenue is already in the middle of implementing this change. And so as a consequence of this, this is really to update our code to make sure it reflects the model ordinance appropriately. Right now, one businesses fall between the old two thousand dollar threshold and the new four thousand dollar threshold. And if all those businesses and no longer would have to pay business licensing fee to the city, then the city would receive approximately three thousand four hundred and sixty-five dollars less in business licensing revenue. So not a lot, but still something that helps out overall. The effective date of this ordinance that we're proposing is for January one of twenty twenty-six, and thank you.
Councilor, do you have any questions? Councilor Johnson?
Just one thing is that there was conversation at FNA about when is it appropriate to waive first reading and go straight on to second reading? And I think that the question, I think, really centers around, if the ordinance is something where we have to do it, then kind of what's the point? I mean, someone could come in, I suppose, and give public comment and go, wait, what are you doing? I want you to break the law as a city council. I mean, are we still going to do that? So I think that, I think that was a worthwhile conversation, but one that we didn't come to a conclusion on, in part because it does kind of deviate from, well, not talking about the thing that's in front of us. So I'd be curious to perhaps at some point have a discussion as a council about revising at least our practice on that front, if it's something that we have to do regardless.
Councilor Benson?
Since you brought it up, my inclination would be not to change the rules. I understand the point that we got to do this regardless, but I think that modifying the rules doesn't doesn't take into account the creativity of our citizens and the sorts of comments that they might want to make with a, with an ordinance like this. Whether or not they are completely germane to whether or not we would go ahead and follow the law or not. I, I, I think that that, you know, that, that would be my, my only uh concern.
City Attorney Dina Burke?
Um, so I'd like to give you a preview of twenty twenty six. Um, Madam Clerk and I have talked about bringing the council rules and procedures, doing a cleanup of that. And so that would be an opportunity to discuss the first and second reading. And um, there's nothing that requires the two readings for an ordinance. Um, but I understand wanting to be really transparent with the community and giving them those multiple opportunities to come talk. And so we can also have a really robust conversation during that process in, in early twenty twenty six when we bring that forward.
Mayor Protem Holloway?
I've spent a lot of time on some, um, but I just want to make comment. The rules as they stand now call out for first and second reading and state that it is at discretion of the council to waive second reading. That process is there for us to take advantage of or not. And so no rule has to change here to support a waiver if we so wanted. Uh, but I agree, the sentiment of the council is inappropriate, so that doesn't, it's no rush, it, let's take opportunity if somebody wants to make comment.
Any other comments? Councilor Johnson?
I think that if, if council did want to return to the topic, then it sounds like there's an opportunity coming up. Then maybe we'll talk about it then, or not. Either way, that'd be a better time to talk about it. Thank you.
Maybe we could take public comment.
We'll take public comment on it.
Okay, any other comments? All right, so the second reading will be November tenth, the next council meeting. Okay, first committee report is Public Safety Committee, and we have the e-motorcycle ordinance discussion. Our interim Chief Horacey, uh will you please introduce this item?
Um, Mayor, council members, I'm here today to kind of open a discussion. We've had many of them throughout public safety committees, um, going back from the day I started here last year. Uh, we've had several of them this year, had one a couple of weeks ago. And this is on us creating a new city ordinance, which uh you should have a draft copy of what myself and the city attorney have and Robert over there have been working on diligently for the last, you know, month and a half, two months of putting together. And part of the reason we're doing this is just the increase that we saw from, especially from April through, throughout the summer um and the number of calls and issues we've had with specifically e-motocycles. I'm only here to address the e-motocycles and e-bike, that are the e-motocycles, not necessarily the e-bikes and e-scooters at this time. Um, we currently have ordinances on our books for those two device, those two separate devices. So the RCW states that a motorcycle, and it's stated in a couple of different places, and you have to kind of do some digging into it of what a motorcycle is. Um, it's not just the typical Harley Davidson that you look at, you know, and hear driving down the road during the summer. Um, they are creating electric ones now that look just like a regular Harley Davidson or Honda Goldwing. Um, however, what we've been having problems with are those that are more look like a dirt bike, very quiet. The kids are using them running up and down the sidewalks or down the trails, or even worse in the roadways. Throughout the summer, we impounded approximately eight of them just in the city of Snoqualmie. Each one of those was doing something in a reckless manner, whether that was they had been involved in a collision of some sort or they were popping a willy in front of a community park and continued from community park down to fairway and then took a left off a fairway and we ended up on another road and, you know, just all on one wheel, lowering it long enough to make the turn. So we've been doing a lot of that work and we do have some RCWs ultimately and some definitions is the one that's listed up here is a motor driven cycle, which is very confusing if you read it. Um, I don't think anybody in this room can tell you what five brake horsepower is in layman's terms from the community um and, and understand what that means. So what we're looking at doing is addressing a picture of what this device is up here, these e-motocycles that these, uh, that our youth are running around on. And defining what they are. And this is what this ordinance ultimately really does, is gives us a good clear definition and gives us some additional tools along the way. It, there are requirements for them being street legal and they can be operated on the street, but they have to be made street legal. And the operators by state law have to have a driver's license and a motorcycle endorsement. We did, we list that out in, in the ordinance. Um, but these devices can go up to a hundred miles an hour if you reprogram them. And all it takes is going on to YouTube and making some changes and being pretty tech savvy. I'm not tech savvy enough to do any of that, but um, you know, the, the one I stopped personally was at a fourteen thousand watt. I mean, that's a lot, and what we're defining any motorcycle as is anything over seven hundred and fifty watts. So that approximately will do about fifty, sixty miles an hour at thirteen thousand watts. They do look similar to dirt bikes. The big difference that we definitely are noting here is that they a bicycle or an electric bicycle would have to have operating pedals. These do not have operating pedals, they will have pegs, um, no different than your typical gas powered dirt bike. So we're, in, in this, we also look at operating them on city property. We currently have a city ordinance in the park side that says you can't operate a motor vehicle in the park. But that doesn't necessarily address the city streets or city property, um, any other property other than the park. So we kind of define those in here, and then we also list any city street under the RCW. So when we get further into it, the, we start defining what it actually is. And this is, this slide shows you what the RC, or what the municipal code that we're proposing um, or would like to propose is going to define it as, and it's any motorcycle defined under the RCW, which is powered by an electric motor. Um, if not, and it has, can't be fully, if it's not fully equipped with pedals, it's a motorcycle. Um, foot pegs are not considered pedals, has an output of over seven hundred and fifty watts, and it provides continuous assistance to, you know, it's self propelled, right? So a class two, class one bicy, electric bicycle is pedal assist where your power, you also have a power output to it, right? The, the person themselves. This is saying that we're not doing that, and it's got anything that goes over twenty eight miles an hour. One of the things we go into is impounding. Some of our local jurisdictions, Mercer Island and Isakla have, Mercer Island passed an ordinance September-ish? Yeah, September, um, where the police department was going to be impounding the bikes to their facility and addressing the impound fees and things like that. These are motor vehicles, they have a VIN, so a vehicle identification number, which means they have to be registered. They should have a title and all of that good stuff, which makes it harder for us to basically get rid of if we don't get a parent to pick it up or claim it and pay the fines. So instead of getting into the business of possessing a bunch of electric motorcycles, I want to continue with what the RCW states, and that is impounding them using our contracted tow companies. They will handle it, we just hand them, we will provide a form to the, um, to the owner or the prospective owner, which would be the parent. And they, it would be upon them to go claim their vehicle from the impound, no different than if, if we towed their car. We also define in this ordinance what a helmet is. Motorcycles have a specific helmet under the forty six CFR section five seventy one point two one five um, under the U.S. Department of Transportation Code, which defines what a helmet is. We are basically implementing that into this. And then if we were proposing a seventy five dollar fine on top of anything else, should the youth not have the proper helmet, um, that we would forward for, um, for that. So this kind of gets in the nuts and bolts of what is allowed, what's not allowed, and this is under the general operation, and it's no person under the age of sixteen shall operate an electric motorcycle. Um, they must have a, it must, the vehicle must be registered with the state of Washington, and the person must have a driver's license and, and an endorsement, no different than the RCW, where though that part of it is pretty much recited in there. Um, it also, we also add in a part where no person shall cause or knowingly permit his or her child or ward under the age of eighteen years of, under the age of eighteen years to operate an electric motorcycle in violation of this chapter. So it kind of helps give us that provision should a parent know or permit somebody, you know, their youth to utilize this vehicle. Um, no person shall operate it on any sidewalk, which if you recall, um, from just even being around and going up and down center or downtown here, we have, um, with the assistance of Public Works, we implemented a sign that has an e-motorcycle, as I had in one of the first slides, um, saying no operation, and it states the RCW of operating a motor vehicle on the sidewalk, um, permitting or prohibiting that action. Um, that has been very helpful, this just articulates it in our ordinance.
So we do have a question from Councilor Washington.
Thank you, Chief Horacey. So going back to that, no person shall or knowingly permit his or her child or ward, what does that mean effectively? Does that mean that a parent could be cited for this? If, if it is truly discovered that, I'm assuming they purchased the vehicle and, you know, encouraged their child to ride this or, you know, use this in an improper manner?
Yes, in short, we, we can forward charges up, whether the, you know, we have to be able to prove that they have a knowing or they have, they knowingly are permitting that, but then we can forward that charge on to a parent. Isn't, if you want a comparison, it would be like a youth party providing alcohol. Okay. You know, if, if an adult provided alcohol is a good way to kind of show a correlation.
Just a quick follow up, Madam Mayor, so that would be an infraction, a civil infraction.
Yeah, and we list out the fines a little further and what, how this all lays out, um, but we do address that part of it. So beyond the sidewalks, open spaces, trails, we also talk about operations, you know, during darkness of hours. Um, list the RCW where it lists out what equipment is required, lights and headlights, taillights, brake lights, all those things, um, reflectors. So all of that is listed out, and then we also address the issue of carrying passengers because I think we can all say we've seen them, and I know we've stopped a few where they're carrying passengers on them. And then, um, towing, where, where, we don't want them towing things behind it either. So, you know, that creates an extra safety risk, not only to them, but to any motorist or pedestrians walking our trails or sidewalks or anything else like that. So here's where we're going to get into the fines. So the first offense, we're, and this is what we're looking at proposing, this is also what um, very similar to what other jurisdictions have passed, such as Mercer Island and North Bend, um, because North Bend passed one last week. And it's, uh, the first offense would be two hundred and fifty dollars, second offense five hundred, third offense seven fifty. Um, we do have in there that in order to do that and get that pushed through the court, especially on the juvenile side, we would have to refer charges on that under the municipal code statute. And what that does is it allows the courts to do their process because we don't assess fines, that's all done through the court process, um, whether it's an adult or juvenile. Um, so that's where we look at here in the penalty section. Um, and then, of course, all traffic laws do apply. I mean, if you're operating on the road, it has to be road legal and you have to follow the rules of the road.
Mayor Protem Holloway and then Councilor Washington.
Go back a slide, though. So I, I, I understand now when you say, uh, referral of charges, and so it goes to the court. Is it criminal charges or is this a?
Infraction.
In, you know, so, traffic infraction.
So it would be an infraction because it's not a criminal statute like reckless driving. Reckless driving or DUI are criminal statutes in the driving, in the driving world. This is more of an infraction.
So should that be infraction referral?
It's still, it's still, it's still, well, but you still also have the possibility of, and it, we don't want to tie our hands either. What if this person is committing, you know, doing recklessly driving the motor vehicle?
But that's a separate offense.
It would be.
So.
We can change it, we're here for a discussion.
If I jaywalk across the street and hit a guy with a stick, it's not jaywalk or battery.
No.
I get both, and I don't need this, this wordage in here to do that.
True, and we're here for this discussion because before we bring it to y'all as a, as an ordinance, because this is a, you know, this is a highly visible topic. I, I want to make sure that we're good, and I think that's a discussion, you know, myself and the city attorney can have, we can make adjustments.
I'm just, again, curious what those words do for you because I, I don't think they do anything for you. Again, I get charged for battery and jaywalking, whether or not those words are there or not.
This is an e-bike, so everybody's getting charged for a battery.
Oh, man, I didn't see that one coming. So what, what, what is gained by having that referral for primitive charges in there?
It's the clarification that it could also be a criminal charge, but I mean, your point is valid that it doesn't, if you jaywalk and assault somebody, you get both.
Yeah, and there's no really criminal charges in here, it's either, it's the increasing fine. Traffic infraction is the only thing in the ordinance here. There's nothing else that says two hundred and fifty dollars and three days in jail.
And we can change it to where referral to the prosecutor's office or something defer to that, you know, just so that.
Infraction referral, just change it from criminal to infraction, I.
It could be up to criminal charges.
Well, and, and the, and you're right, the, the, if it was a criminal charge, like, let's say it was a reckless driving or a vehicular assault, that is covered under the RCW in either case. So we, we can simply change that, I mean, we're, we're in draft mode, we're in, we're in, in this for the discussion and, you know, when we were at the committee level, it was, I think it was believed that all of y'all should have a say in, in this one going forward. So before we got into it.
Councilor Washington?
Yeah, I know, council member, uh.
They stole your thing.
Thank you, yeah, council member Holloway took the words out of my mouth. It's, it's described here as a traffic infraction.
Yep.
So if it's a traffic infraction, there would be no criminal charges unless there is an additional charge.
Right.
So, yeah, I, I, I would feel a lot more comfortable with the traffic infraction and potential referral for traffic infraction charges, un- unless there are other charges.
Yeah, and, and that's always open to us through the, the current listed RCWs and everything.
So again, going back to that other piece, um, parental piece, that would be the, the potential violation would be a traffic infraction if it's discovered.
I think we would have to address that one and make that, add a separate fee schedule into there and make it a misdemeanor. Um, or something, wouldn't we? It wouldn't be a traffic violation if the parents let them use it because they're not violating the traffic code.
Could be a non-moving.
Well, it could be a non-moving, so we, we can address that part of it too.
So a non, a non-moving infraction, potentially.
Yeah.
Councilor Johnson? Councilor Johnson.
Uh, yeah, I I think my fellow council members have have essentially said what what I want to say on that particular topic. I I just wanted to paint the picture of, you know, a kid gets a holiday present from their parents. And then now they have a criminal record. That just doesn't sit right with me when they're like fourteen. So anyway, um, I I think we talked that one uh pretty well. Uh, I did a few other things. First thing was, I don't know what slide it was. I I was wondering, um, there was a a line that talked about that they cannot ride one of these vehicles within the city of Snoqualmie. Uh, let's see, where was that? Oh, I wish I which slide it was. Well, anyway, uh, there was a line that said uh that it wouldn't be permitted for uh someone. I believe it was under the age of sixteen to ride within the city of Snoqualmie. And I was curious, did that include private property or is that intended to mean city property? And if so, should we use the definition as provided in city city property instead of city of Snoqualmie?
City Attorney Dina Burke.
I don't have an answer to that question, but I just wanted to clarify that infractions are civil. They're not a criminal record.
Yeah, and and hence, yeah, the language discussion we had, yeah.
Top line.
So there it is.
So it's the top line. This doesn't preclude somebody from riding it on private property if they own it or have permission, no different than a gas-powered dirt bike. Because we we we're looking solely and and that's why I went back further to the definitions that that we're defining what the city property is and or the roadway through RCW. If somebody owns a piece of land and on it they, you know, and they're operating it, I can't stop them from operating it if they have permission from the owner, because I'd have to have a reason to go on that piece of property to do so.
Councilor Johnson.
Yeah, so then um I'd wondered there, based on what was listed in the definitions, instead of city of Snoqualmie saying that what we mean is these public properties, it said city property in quotes. I was just wondering if that should say that and that's a legal question. I could be totally wrong about that, but anyway. I'll let legal consider that.
We also have two oh two, which is also a state route. And if we if we limit it to just if we don't do within the city.
Oh, I switched things. So that would count as public property. Okay, that makes sense. Not not city property, but public property. Okay.
So two oh two, I mean, it's a stretch or, you know, and they're coming in and out and we, I mean, we have damage done to the you know, to the boardwalk down there, things like that. But we've even had videos sent to us of the youth riding them down the middle of railroad, which is still two oh two. So it kind of covers both of us or both ways if we don't. I- i- and this is simply for public property, not private.
Absolutely. And then also if we were able to transfer Snoqualmie Parkway to the state, then that could also then become something that we didn't want to define as being city property there. So that makes sense. If if it's just understood that city of Snoqualmie means any public property, even if it's not owned by the property within the city, then I think we're good.
And I think we did a pretty good job at the definitions in there to help with that. Because we also detailed out what a city street is um or roadways within the city alone of Snoqualmie. If that helps.
City Christensen, Councilor Christensen.
Thanks. Um, for city street, then, does that also include the sidewalks? Under that part of the definition or is it encapsulated within just Snoqualmie?
Or part there?
Where did we have the sidewalk part at?
Ten point three six point oh two oh. It says no person shall use or operate an electric motorcycle upon any sidewalk. And that goes on for other spaces.
Councilor Johnson.
I do have a couple of uh other things. Next one is about the helmet definition. I was wondering how similar is that to other helmet ordinances that we have in the city, especially around bicycles? Are they intended to be similar? Should they be? Are they intended to be different? Should they be different?
So they're very similar with the exception of what the requirements are, which is why we reference that chapter of the traffic code. Because a motorcycle helmet has a lot more, it has a stricter standard to meet than a bicycle helmet or or something you would wear on a scooter.
And then I could just do my last one if you want.
I guess two ones in it. Even it when it does hit twenty-eight miles per hour, it's still providing the little juice. So it's when it exceeds the twenty-eight mile per hour, so you may want to go back because you've limited still providing power at twenty-eight miles per hour.
Well, that one falls under the class three bi- the class three bicycle.
Understand the class three, but even at twenty-eight, I'm saying if you're going uphill and you're doing twenty-eight, it's still providing power. It's when you go beyond twenty-eight miles per hour and you're providing power, that's where you're beyond class three and when you're technically a motorcycle. Uh, so just take a look at that wordage up further. My other question, though, if I have a motorcycle. Maybe it's a Vespa scooter, whatever, that has a seat that accommodates two people. I can't take a passenger with me?
If it's equipped to, it would be able to. Because that would fall under the definition of an RC under the RCW. Most of these are not equipped with to um or the capacity of seating two until you get into the ones that actually look like a motorcycle.
But you don't make that distinction in the ordinance. You just say no passengers. So if it's equipped and part of what I'm thinking, there are cargo bikes out there right now greater than seven hundred and fifty watts or can be configured greater than one hundred and seven fifty watts by Bluetooth uh that specifically have space for kids in the back. So um to make it clear, it's just it has to be designed to accommodate. If it's not, no passengers. That's all I'm suggesting.
Councilor Benson and then Councilor Christensen.
I I thought the I thought the point of not having passengers was a safety issue that that if we've got a a sixteen-year-old kid with a thirteen-year-old behind him, that that's uh an an added level of of unsafety. Uh, I thought that was the the goal of the of the distinction that they aren't.
But the bullet just says basically no passengers.
And we can regulate further. You know, and say, no, we don't want them to have that, even if they have that capacity. You know, to carry two. I haven't seen any of these dirt bikes with a capacity of carrying two. But we can say, you know, it's no different than, you know, if we had mended our like scooter ordinance to say age of twelve instead of the age of sixteen, which was what the RCW states. You know, we can, we can always be more regular, you know, regulatory on it. Um, which is why we went with a no, because it is a safety these youth at sixteen years old don't or fifteen years old, carrying a twelve-year-old, let's say, don't have the knowledge or the basis for managing the weight distribution, the shift of weight, things like that. So that's why we went with ultimately the no.
Yeah, I agree. If it's not a
I was just gonna say with respect to the cargo bikes and things like that, that have the spaces for the kids on the back. Those are all going to be fitting under the class two or three with like the e-assist and the pedals, though they wouldn't be like the motorcycle.
There are some now you can configure beyond class three.
For the electric motorcycles like this?
Uh, not for electric motor for those. There are, what we would consider e-bikes right now that you can go in and change the configuration to go beyond twenty-eight miles per hour. They're not, they're not appreciated by the community, the e-bike community, but they're out there.
And that would jump it into the the e-motorcycle. So, I mean, we're trying, ultimately, I think the goal is to say no to the passengers. So we don't run the risk of having a twelve-year-old fall off of one and get hurt, seriously hurt or something. So, I mean, like I said, we're here for discussion and see where y'all want to go with that particular part.
Councilor Benson.
Yeah, I think a general rule of motor safety is that the more kids you get in a vehicle, the more dangerous the vehicle becomes. So I I think limiting it to one or 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 zero is um the safest way to go.
Councilor Johnson.
All right, then the uh last concern that I had at least at present was how does uh ten dot thirty-six dot oh two oh eight dot A dot one? I think that's the proper legal ease compared to dot four. So what that is is it says no person under the age of sixteen shall operate the electric motorcycle, et cetera. And then there is no person shall cause or knowingly permit his or her child or ward under the age of eighteen. Well, but if we're saying that it's okay to go uh over sixteen in the first part, then why are we going to be penalizing people for allowing a seventeen-year-old? Shouldn't it both be sixteen? Or both be eighteen?
Only the sixteen-year-olds that can buy their own.
So number four is saying that if a parent or guardian allows their child to violate this chapter, that there's potential that the parent or guardian is liable. And number one is saying that nobody under sixteen is allowed to operate an e-motorcycle.
Okay, Mayor, can I rephrase uh to check to see if I got it? Okay, so I think the what's the attorney is saying is that the first part is saying that they just can't do it under the age of sixteen. And then the fourth part is saying that no one can cause or allow a child to do it, meaning between the age of sixteen, eighteen or under the age of sixteen for that matter, but between sixteen and eighteen to do so in violation. So like to do a moving violation, like, yeah, go do it without your helmet. Okay, that makes sense to me. Thank you.
Councilor Martin.
And just for clarification, you have to have a driver's license and you have to have a motorcycle endorsement in order. And that's that's part of the reason why under the age of sixteen, neither of those would apply. And that's where the dangerous behavior is happening.
And the majority of the individuals we're seeing operating these are under the age of fifteen. And and so this gives us more tools in our toolbox where we're staying a little more out of the criminal realm of things. And or really, you know, it just allows us and it's defining what it is from the city. Um, saying this is what we're saying you can't operate. Because that is one of the biggest battles that all of the cities have been dealing with is what is this device? Because ultimately, you're finding it in three different definitions in the RCW. So to kind of wrap up, this this slide part is kind of goes back into, I I move into the bicycle part just to kind of wrap that part up. So you we can kind of show what is what we're not looking at right now and that we're only looking at the motorcycle devices. So they have to have uh fully operated operational pedals for human propulsion. So that's the class one, two, and the threes. Have to have less than seven hundred and fifty watts. And an electric assisted bicycle will meet the following requirements, which I know y'all have all seen this slide before. But um it talks about a class one is going to have a pedal assist, maximum speed of twenty miles an hour. A class two bicycle is going to have a pedal assist, a throttle, maximum speed of twenty miles an hour. And then the class three pedal assist and maximum speed of twenty-eight. However, I will say council member Hall Holloway is correct. We're learning more and more that the class threes can be modified, no different than the motorcycles and exceed those speed, those those horsepower ratings or the wattage ratings and speed, which would then bump them into this motorcycle definition and put them into this uh category. So we're kind of covering all of our bases here. My goal with this is obviously if we were to you know, when we when we're ready to bring the ordinance forward, I want a educational timeframe to say this is what we're doing. Um, I want our community to understand that. We're, I think we do a really good job at that. We've put a lot of messaging out over these topics um for the last year, and I think we'll just continue that and explain what you know, what we're putting together here to protect our community and kind of address these issues and concerns that you know, we get calls on on a regular basis and weather has slowed it down a little bit, but it's still happening. So uh, I mean, on my way to work this morning, I saw one coming in, running down highway eighteen. So um, you know, like I say, it is something that is a concern. And, you know, we've had one, we've had, I've had an officer here see one get off the highway in our at the at ninety and the Parkway up there and then head towards Fall City. So it is happening and this is something we have to address. You know, make sure we're providing the best tools we can to the officers that are out there working with them and dealing with the issues. So any more questions for?
So what state, North Bend just passed an ordinance, correct? You're having to.
And this ordinance is very similar to their ordinance. There's a little bit of definition worded change, but for the most part, that's about it. We, and they're all very similar with the exception of kind of the impounding part with Mercer Islands. And what is a clause looking at pushing through their council. Um, I've been in communication with all of those and North Bend, like I said, North Bend is very, very similar to this. Their their definition wording is just a little bit different, but it's it's still the same.
Thank you. Any other questions? Councilor Benson.
I wonder what the utility would be of getting these our or whatever ordinance we pass as close to North Bend's as possible. Because if if there's, if there's no real daylight between what what we consider appropriate and what they've considered appropriate, it seems like it would simplify things for law enforcement if there was a just a a straight across understanding of what that ordinance should be.
The definitions are the same. I mean, like I said, it's just a little bit of the wording difference between just in in how it's phrased. The um penalties are the same, the operations are all the same. And and I and I put a big hook, a lot of pressure on that for we have shared paths and I want everything to be as as far as enforcement purposes, the same. Um, like I said, it's just a little bit of tweaking in the wording. I think ours does a little bit better job as far as defining it.
Councilor Benson.
But but what do you think that 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 the slight distinction is worth having a distinction?
Or do you? I'll refer to the city attorney on that one because it it's a definition part. We also go into a little bit more on what city property is. Um, that was the only major, I think, real distinction.
I think there was that and then also our one for the holding a parent responsible. We based ours off the wording for the RCW where a parent allows a minor without a license to drive, which I think is what we should connect it to, whereas I think North Bend and Mercer Island had different wording. Um, and I think ours should be modeled off of that RCW. So there were intentional changes that were made.
Any other questions? So what's the next step? Are you bringing the ordinance back?
I will work with uh our city attorney and Robert to make make a couple of tweaks. And then my plan would be to bring this back for an ordinance reading. Or unless y'all want another discussion on it, but I think we, I think off of what y'all provided us tonight, I think we can move forward with an ordinance, just tweaking it and bringing it forward as an ordinance.
Right, great, thank you.
Wave second reading or?
Did you have another comment? Oh, Councilor Martin, I'm sorry.
So I want to thank Chief Horey save for working on this. This has come through public safety from residents as well. And the other item that we continue to monitor and and address, and that's on speed. Speed zones, particularly in the school zones and and Public Works has been involved in that as well. So appreciate it when citizens come forward with their concerns and that they're being heard. And we're addressing those things as we go along. So that's all for public safety unless any of the other members of the committee have other things to add. Thank you very much.
Is there any report for a community development committee?
Nothing at this time, Madam Mayor.
How about finance administration committee?
No further report.
So in the committee of the whole, we have the twenty twenty-six legislative priorities discussion. Mayor Tim Holloway. Let you lead the discussion. We saw earlier that you sent out.
Yeah, Dina, do you have that? Can you bring that up?
I guess I could get in and share. There we go. Again, um intentionally, the black is what we had before. Hopefully, the color colors came through.
They did not.
They didn't.
In the email, yeah.
Oh, okay. All right, so then, all right. All right, and I did not get into Zoom. Um, so the first one, I'll pull it up. Okay. My eye test fails that far. Got a broader, I could, all right. All right, the first one there again is um community center, still holding that on there. It should have been a little squiggly mark in front of the five million. Uh, I thought there was before.
It looks like a squiggly. Well, yeah, it's squiggly. It's squiggly.
It's squiggly, all right. Well, it's a dollar sign, but it's probably inflation's gonna take.
The one that was uh posted in the agenda.
Now.
Has this quickly.
As quick, let's keep that one. All right, and um again, affordable housing, expand read authority from the state uh to fund affordable housing. That is a carryover from our twenty twenty five. We do have a new one um in public safety, increased funding for crisis intervention and training. I'll let you read that versus me going through it all the way. All right, and then off officer recruitment is again a carryover from what we had before. And continuing that, uh, again, looking for public pursuit, further expanding crimes eligible public suit, including auto theft and some property. Where uh current restrictions kind of force us to drive left when they go right. I ninety and highway interchange, that was left in there, just, you know, they're hitting the final changes to get us to there. We may want to think a little beyond just the creek beyond raging river. You know, uh, that we might want to support some of that eighteen going on down further from there.
Councillor Mutton?
Yeah, we should change that because that is done. The interchange is is basically done other than the second layer of asphalt. Um, but we need to change that to SR eighteen, the emphasis of completing that SR eighteen from Deep Creek to um Hobart.
Right.
Yeah.
Exit. And making sure that it's four lane or two lanes in both directions.
Over the path.
Right, Councillor Johnson?
Yeah, I I um have some proposed language that I can send that's to that very effect.
Okay.
That I'll send to uh Mayor Pro Town.
Please, I'll incorporate.
Councillor Christensen?
And I had brought up at F and A, in terms of officer recruitment and retention, we did ask for additional funding tools and resources to support officer recruitment and retention, including updating the public sales safety tax. This is one where I would absolutely love to get more funding for our police officers and things like that. However, the legislature did end up providing additional tools for both a uh increase in sales tax and also um for the grants. So I thought that perhaps we shouldn't, at the very least revise this uh and possibly take it out and focus on the crisis intervention training and or um, you know, additional funding for the mental health. Person who I don't see on the list anymore, and I don't see that role any any longer as well.
Can you give me words to that and we'll get it back in?
Yeah.
All right, then remaining on the list on the next page, Suquami Parkway jurisdiction transfer. At least keep that in front and have continued discussions on that. Property tax cap, revised property tax tied to inflation for up to three percent. What else did I miss, Karen?
Uh, sorry, I was wondering about something else.
About the?
No, I was wondering about something else.
Okay. Boom. And then uh some later items I just got, request for regional transit collaboration and support. I think that was your wordage.
It was mine. It could be King County. We need their support as well as state funding.
Totally agree.
Yeah, I got no problem with that one. And then standardized tribal fee for service agreement.
Right, requesting King County or the state's assistance in just creating a generic fee for service agreement that could be used by all municipalities and tribes.
So I'm a split of hair here.
We're starting.
I I agree those conversations should continue. I'm not sure I want it at this level. Uh, just for.
We've made the.
Collaboration with the tribe.
Actually, we made the request to King County to help us with this as well, because they do have a um a tribal liaison that is that would step up and assist us in that. Because so far, every meeting we've set up has been canceled. Councillor Mutton?
I would agree that it's important, perhaps we have a separate one just for King County issues. The and and do one per state issues.
Right.
Right, this is, I'm, the the only objection I'm getting is how high you put it up on the flagpole.
Right.
And I just don't think this one's appropriately this high on the flagpole. The conversation should continue, but not this high up. I think you had other.
Councillor Christensen?
Yeah, I don't know that this is the right venue kind of to have this part of the conversation. I I look at more of the others as having to do with with the law and or funding, like direct funding. I don't know, maybe I'm looking at our legislative priorities differently than other folks, but again, I'm just not sure that this is the right place to be putting that request.
For a request to King County?
Yeah.
Councillor Johnson?
Yeah, I uh had thought that this was more legislative priorities to the state than to our uh King County representatives. So, yeah, I I think that that it's an important conversation. It's an important uh thing that um that our city and other cities are struggling to figure out how to move forward appropriately. Just, uh, I don't think that this is the right spot for it, not that it's not an important topic.
Right, I think when I sent the email a week or two weeks ago, I suggested that it be a King County priority for both of these, because we do need their assistance.
Oh, that's.
For a variety of things, so. Councillor Johnson?
That's actually a really good point. Thank you, uh, Mayor, for pointing that out. The other one about the regional transits uh collaboration, great. Um, but I again, I thought that that these priorities were for our legislators for the upcoming session. And so, uh, again, very important topic, um, but perhaps we need something separate that's for King County. Um, that's like a separate list, uh, because otherwise our legislators are going to be like, why are you bringing us stuff that's not even stuff that we deal with?
Correct. That's why we're requesting a King County priorities. So this would be.
It'd be two different documents rather than in one.
Right.
Okay, and that makes me feel better.
Not me.
Yeah.
I I agree with we can, we can separate state, county. This, this is too much of a public document to in to incite collaboration if you have this in here with the tribe, and I don't want to poke the tribe anymore. But that's just me.
I think it's a common theme throughout, whether it's this tribe or a different tribe. Um, different cities are dealing with the same issues. So my point is that it can be for a variety of tribes and for all municipalities.
So Chair, this is the Suquami Council Legislative Priorities. The mayor may have your own priorities. I'm just suggesting this may not be one that the council wants to give this level of visibility to.
Okay, Councillor Christensen?
I also have concern that somebody reading this will think that we are with our language here, you know. I I I have concerns about the language, I guess, in it as well, and maybe I'll leave my concerns there. But in terms of kind of the hashing out of things, I don't think that that the way that this is drafted and presented is the way to approach that in a way that will get us to hopefully an agreement. I I think that that it will be interpreted more as an attack by folks reading this, and I I just, I don't think that that will be helpful in those conversations.
Councillor Johnson?
Yeah, I think that I'm in agreement. Um, and I think that one possibility is that since uh I believe that the King County Council is in session year round as opposed to our state legislature that has a very small window, that perhaps we just focus on the state legislative priorities for now, and then uh, we can deal with King County maybe come January or something like that. So that we could uh have uh a more robust conversation of other priorities, because when I was thinking about, you know, what are the issues and stuff? I do, I wasn't thinking about a King County list myself, so I have other things that I might be thinking about as priorities for King County. Um, and then maybe we just push the King County stuff off uh for now. Uh, but uh, just in general, I I think I agree with some of the other council members con comments on uh, is this the proper venue for that particular sensitive topic?
And I think that was the end of the list. The rest of it is reference material. If you guys will get me the additions we talked about, I'll incorporate those in. Um, you'll see I have a naming convention on here, and I will try to keep the current provision cycle going versus what can I find in my email to start with? From here and move forward. So uh, give me your input in email, I'll incorporate in, I'll separate out uh state and county, probably county is just a parking lot page right now, is a separate document um for further discussion. Okay?
Right. Councillor Washington?
When would you like to see a completion of the list, Madam Mayor? Like ideally, when do you want this completed to take it to the county or state legislators?
I think we need it, I mean, they're starting to, they have committee assignments and they're, they're going to start the discussion, so as soon as possible.
So, yeah, where I fall on this, I'm I'm in agreement of two separate documents. I just, I need to take some time and kind of think about the standardized uh tribal fee for service agreement. So, um, I can think about that and get a response by the end of the week.
So do you want to come up with the legislative priority to approve during the next council meeting then?
Yeah, I'll try, I'll get it out, and we'll have further discussion with the intent to prove next council.
Councillor Washington or Councillor Johnson?
And just to clarify, just the state legislative priorities for.
Just the state legislative priorities, yeah. There's bleed over between the two.
Yeah.
My community center is going to appear on vote.
Oh, actually, one one more little thing.
Councillor Johnson?
Thank you. Uh, is, uh, I I think we should also consider, um, you know, as we start adding things, then it starts to become uh, I I think more challenging for our legislators to figure out, well, what are your priorities? Like, you know, give me as as few as you can. And and there's a lot of really good stuff on there. I'm just, I guess, thinking uh, before we start adding things, look at the list and think, does my new thing that I want to add really, uh, that do I want to sacrifice the attention that these other things will get?
Right, any other comments?
Thank you.
Yep. Okay, Mayor's update. So first of all, um so you know, every day there's a twelve P M siren in downtown Suquami. And the siren originally came from the old fire station that um once stood where City Hall is today. Um, it shares the legacy with the former wirehouse or mill where a similar siren signaled the lunch hour for male workers. And but not everyone that's driving through or walking through town appreciates the siren. And it seems like um some visitors have um had comments where they were actually startled by it. So our so Carol Peterson, our local resident, um, worked with the Suquami Merchants Association and the members of the United Methodist Church, and came up with a solution. And Mayor Pro Tim Holloway, were you part of the group that voted on it?
No, it was not. I presently did not go to United, to the Suquami Methodist Church.
Okay. So beginning um November first, the noon tradition will continue to be in a gentler way. They're saying the hundred year old bells, the Suquami United Methodist Church will chime first, followed by a shortened version of the siren. So you'll still hear, you'll hear the United Methodist Church first and then the siren. So there'll be signs up at each of the locations in downtown and it'll um, that way you get to hear two antique sirens um or chimes and then the sirens. So that'll be happening November first. Mayor Pro Tim Holloway?
So visitors complained that one siren was startling. So we added bells?
Yes, they're gonna hear chimes.
How, give me the train of logic, because I'm confused now. The bells are a warning for the siren to come?
And it's a nice, right, it's a nice chime, and then they hear the siren, and so there'll be signs throughout. We pushed out social media regarding this. So all of our merchants will let the visitors know.
And the s- the the church has committed every day at noon?
Yes, I have. I have.
Well, I I know how the bells work in that church. I was a member. It's a rope.
It's a rope.
I I also know we had probably two able-bodied, small little ones who could actually do the rope. I'm not sure their position to really make that commitment, I'm sorry.
Well, they have.
They did.
They have.
I I know, but.
They haven't signed up for a month out.
Yep.
Okay.
Right. I think it's genuinely very nice idea where you actually get to hear the chimes, because I haven't heard the chimes. I'm usually not down here Sunday morning, so it'd be nice to hear it each day. Councillor Benson, do you have a comment?
I I was just gonna say, uh, Carol Peterson was saying that she had a a list of, of, yeah, people are clamoring to do the job, so.
Oh, it's fun. I, I've pulled the bell, it's a grand time. I agree.
We'll probably sign up and go over and ring it. Maybe for a week, so.
Well, that's up to, I, you have to, I'm still listed as a member. I don't know, it's not.
You can even sign up. Head over and ring it.
Sorry, anyone can sign up, Madam Mayor, or do you have to be a member of the church?
I don't think they'd restrict.
I I think if you contact the person that you can sign up, I think you can sign up.
That could be your problem.
Can't be late, though.
And, oh, that, I'm out. And access, access may be an issue.
Anyway.
But.
We'll let them work out. Um, another thing, so interim chief Horace Aide and I visited Echo Glen this last week, and we met with our, the superintendent Jeffrey Wallace to learn about the safety protocols and their capital improvement investments. So as you know, they've been um working on on the perimeter fence, and so um they've made progress on it, they've removed trees, they're digging trenches, um, but there's a holdup on the King County permits, and so we talked with King County, and they're working with Echo Glen on getting the permits. I think there's a slight change by the contractor, and so those will be coming. So they will be, once those are done, they will be putting up the perimeter fence. Um, but a third of the work's pretty much done, they just need to get the permit so they can um start placing the fence. But I would say over the past four years, we have seen um continued um improvements in their overall security. And so it's very satisfying when you go there, um, it's like you, you put your keys, you put your purse, phones, everything in a locker, and you go through security like you're going through the airport. So you have, um, actually, you're sending your bags through or purse or whatever through um kind of the bag screen, and then you actually um are in front of the whatever you call it, the screener that you're holding up and they're they're checking. So anyways, they've remarkably improved their security. So this perimeter fence will, I think, be very helpful. And so we're just, you know, we always emphasize that the safety and security of our community is very important, and they are working on it, so. So it was a good meeting. And last council, I'm. And last council, I mentioned that we were the top five performers for the National, let's see, Natural Environment Award. And today we actually won the 2025 Best in Governance Award, so the national champion for excellence in category of the National Natural Environment Award. And that is through the NCS survey that our residents took. And this was given out at the ICMA conference. So Mike Chambles is there and he accepted the award. So that's great news for Suquonmi. I think the last thing is, we know that November is a busy month, both the staff and council, and there's a lot of things coming up, starting this next week on, for FNA and for pull-up with council. And so just letting you know, give you a heads up to be able to spend time and prepare for all the different meetings we have coming up, so. As I have, thank you. So is there any community liaison reports? Cusser Cotton?
Yes, last past week, I attended the SEA, Seattle King County Public Health Briefing. And basically, we've now got a new medical director, Dr. Sandra Valenciano, who comes with many, many, many credentials and is very well-versed in some of the things going on. Dr. Khan, who was the acting medical director, kind of gave us some updates on the federal government status. Basically, the CDC, as we know it, no longer exists. It's just a few random programs. In his words, he basically said that, that the CDC has been eviscerated. And which is a sad state of, of affairs. But it, how this affects our, our state and local health departments were, basically been left to fend for themselves. So what they are doing is doing some regional alliances of the public health, various public health departments. And we were in the Western States and Hawaii, a government health alliance is just starting to kind of shape up. So we're hoping that the local health departments will, will join in. CDC has been really relevant to us as far as making the, you know, kind of the vaccine protocols and, you know, for everything from the pediatricians to the, you know, epidemics and stuff. So influenza season is upon us, certainly an increase in COVID-19 cases.
Cusser Washington?
Thank you, thank you, Chair. CDC was responsible.
Can hear you.
Sorry, CDC was responsible for a lot of grant money. So now what happens to that, Councilmember Cotton? Is there another department that'll go to? Or does the grant money just magically go away?
Wow, it's gone. The funding for the programs, which was kind of next on the items I was bringing up with coming into cold influenza, COVID season, which will basically kind of run until after Christmas, the holiday travel is getting done. So recommendations are get your vaccines now. The pharmacies are well-stocked. But there's no more free vaccine clinics through the state or feds anymore. So a lot of the, yeah, public health things have been drastically affected. There's a few free available, but check the King County website about where to find. And they were not sure, or are not sure, if, if you're gonna need to have ID to be able to get the free vaccines. You can still go through King County's street medicine program for vaccines and some of the naloxone distribution, as well as our fire department, of course, is for the naloxone free distribution. But that is definitely, and they won't ask for ID, so just to be aware of that. There's a decreased level of servants, service since 2024, even in the private sector, they're not getting the bucks anymore too. So that was kind of the, the, the big ones as far as the county, King County Public Health is cracking down on the unlicensed food vendors, some of the pop-ups, just for, for food safety issues. So we'll be seeing more of that, the checking for permits and code enforcement and things like that. So their goal is to hook them up with commissaries where there can be some face, uh, free, clean environment for their food safety prep, so that would, that'll be helpful. They were especially concerned with FIFA coming to our area soon, so these things will become more of a problem.
Right, thank you for the report. Any other reports? Cusser Christensen?
Yeah, the Suquonmi Valley Y recently had their board meeting and just wanted me to make sure that folks knew that there are a number of options open for folks in the community, including day passes starting as low as $5. There's community teen time, which is open Monday to Friday from three to five, as well as a tween club that also has staff members organizing games, things like that. There's still the community shower program. So if you live in our community and you don't have access to bathe, you can do that there. They also offer community mahjong and cards as well, different card games throughout the weeks. In addition, they're gonna be having a candy, Halloween candy drop-off from November 1st through 8th. If you don't want to end up with 30 pounds of candy in your house, they'll take those and deliver them to Birthday Dreams, which helps provide birthday parties for homeless children. So, you know, if you don't, you prefer that your delicious treats go elsewhere to make someone else happy, that's a good option to do it. Finally, they are finishing up their fund drive. They are very close to hitting their goals. The fundraising that they do throughout the year is used to help provide money for scholarships so that all of the children in the community and families as well are able to make use of the Y.
Great. Also, if you're, if you're on Medicaid, and I think it's like you have Plan B or a variety of different plans, seniors can actually, Medicaid would pay for their membership, so seniors can use it for free. And I think like 90% of the people over 65 use it for free. So it's just another option. Any other report? There being no further business, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Second.
By Cusser Washington, second by Cusser Johnson. Any discussion? All in favor, we say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, nay? And we are adjourned at 8:24. Have a good night. Thank you.